Go ahead, Mayor Branquino.
Good evening. Welcome to the City of Palm Coast Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, June 1st, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. right now. I'm calling this meeting to order, and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance of the Flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Virginia Rufford, please.
Mayor Branquino?
Here.
Councilmember Barbosa?
Here.
Councilmember Danko?
Here.
Councilmember Clufus?
Present.
Mayor, all members are present.
All right. Before we go into public participation, and due to the fact that I'm having problems with my internet here, and there's a little delay, I would like to pass my gavel to Councilman Clufus, who's the senior councilman and run this meeting, and I would gladly intercheck or interfere if that's needed. Would you be so kind, sir?
Absolutely. Thank you very much. For the audience, tonight is an interesting set of circumstances. I'll be guest-chairing tonight's meeting. Thank you, Eddie. Or thank you, Mayor, I should say. So for our first order...
Can you speak more into it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can everyone hear us, just to make sure, so we don't get going? We're all good? No?
Barely.
Barely? Now? No? Okay. Yeah. Volume up on that? I'm... Yep. How about now in the back? Good? Okay. Excellent. Perfect. Okay. First item of business, do we have public participation in the front end of this meeting? Excellent. Okay. I'd like to open up public participation for any items that are not on the agenda. You can come to the podium, state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes once the timer begins, and you'll get a nice little beep-beep warning when 15 seconds are left.
I'm Al Cryer. I'm here to speak about safety on Simran. Before I use up my three minutes, I want to thank all of you. You've taken this program right from zero to where we're having meetings now with different people involved with this, so I really, really appreciate it. You listened. The city's been so gracious. I just can't thank you enough. You've listened to over 10 presentations. One of the first presentations we made to you, we said, "Well, we talked to 15 people that lived on Resora on Simran," and the reaction was very, very good. So we went back, and since then, we've made over 100 calls, face-to-face, resident to resident, on Simran. We got a petition signed by these individuals, and I'm going to give you that for permanent record. And I might mention, everybody is in favor of it except one person, and he does not like construction vehicles. So that's it. It was one person out of the whole works. I might mention that we're going to be doing another petition on the five communities that commute to Simran each day, and we're going to have those, and we're going to submit them one at a time, because I look at it this way: When this is approved, anybody that complains and their signature is on something, it's going to make it much easier for all of us. In closing, I want to ask basically two or three things of you gentlemen. You've taken it all the way from here to here. I know we're getting in some tough times here, but on our end of it, if there's anything that we can help with in moving Simran along, and some other people already from the city have contacted me and says, "Hey, we're going to be getting together on this, and we need these ideas," which I really appreciate. I couldn't ask anything more than what you people have done. So please call if we can help, and I don't want it to fall in a wayside. And I think in closing, all I can say is, I just can't thank you people enough, and you work awful hard, real hard, to make this a good place to live. Thank you very, very much. I beat the three minutes.
Thank you for the positive comment. Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. George Mayo, Palm Coast. I'm referencing a three-page article in this past Sunday's Daytona News-Journal concerning the recent lobbyist, I mean legislative session that just went on, and it seems like every piece of that article, every bill that was passed, something had preemption in it. And it's getting worse, and it's getting worse. I spoke about this over a year ago. I spoke about this before. Preemption, preemption. I know we're only one small city in the state of Florida, but I'm wondering if we should have a conversation with our state representatives, both representative and state senator. It did not give a breakdown on how they voted, so I can't specifically say they voted this or that, but everything is preemption, and it seems like Tallahassee doesn't want to hear any instruction from the federal government. They know what to do. The feds don't have it. When it comes to the city, Tallahassee knows what we want to do. And our lobbyists, what are they saying? Is that a priority that we pay them to do up in Tallahassee? Why are we paying them if preemption is going on and getting worse and getting worse? Because pretty soon, if it just gets worse, another legislation session or two, we won't need you. We'll just have two 85-inch screens up here with Zoom, and Tallahassee's going to say, "Okay, here's what you do with the swells. Okay, here's what you do with garbage." You will become obsolete. So I know we have to do what we have to do. We're only limited in what we can do, but I think we need more forcefully to put our voices forward and say, "Stop this preemption. These people, representatives, live among us. Why are they voting like this?" You know? I just don't understand. So I'm hoping somebody here, whether it's the future mayor, the future manager, or even Mr. Morton, can get in on there, whatever, but I think we really need to do something about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. About a month or so ago, when you came through City Hall on that side of the building, you had to go through a metal detector, you had to go through temperature check, you had to go through security, which was great. I don't have a problem with that. I happen to have come through that side of the building this morning. Here was a security guard sitting at the door. No more metal detector, no more nothing. Came in here tonight, there's nothing outside. No metal detector, no nothing. In the wake of what happened last month at the nightly meeting, and we won't bring that up, because that's a sore subject... Yeah, I know. You should have been here. We thought for sure, in the wake of what happened last month, where our mayor was verbally attacked, and if that counter wasn't there, I'm quite sure some people were ready to climb over the counter, but in that wake, I'd like to know how and why the metal detector came down, and it's not over here where it belongs. The people that are upset that come on that side of the building, the worst thing they're upset about is because their water bill was too high, or their garbage didn't get picked up, or somebody's parking illegally. That's their biggest issue over there. Over here, we got nothing. We got nothing. And in the wake of what happened last month, I'd like to counsel tonight to some... Somebody explain to all of us why you took the metal detector down. I mean, I personally may not agree with any of your opinions or decisions on anything, but I learned a long time ago, I still have to respect you for the position that you hold. And some people appear over the course of the years, including the former city manager, him and I went round and round, but I still respected him for the position that he held. So before I leave tonight, I want somebody to tell me how, why, and when it's going back up, because I may not agree with you, but I think you're kind of nice people. I'd like to keep you around for a while. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, Terry Mega, East Section. As we all know, this started at the beginning of the hurricane season, and there's a bridge that's over East Hampton, that goes over the canal. There was some work about three months ago that was done. We had drivers that were down there. They went ahead and put conduit down underneath the bridge. They went ahead and put valves, I surmise, for better flow, water flow. Well, about a month ago, some contractors came through, and I don't know for whatever reason, and they took down every single tree on both sides of the bank. Them trees landed in the water. Wouldn't it made more sense if you went ahead and done that first, prior to doing the work that was underneath the bridge with the divers? Now, what I'd like to know, and I think a lot of us want to know over in the East Section, is when are those logs going to be cleared out of there? One. Two, we got, you know, the swells are not really that well, that good over that area. So, you know, something's going to back up, you're going to have a log jam that's going to be underneath that bridge, and it's going to block those valves. So, there we go. It could be flooded out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Alan Lowe. First, I'd like to say it's amazing to see so many people here tonight. So often, over the past seven months, I've sat here almost alone. So we are in a time where strong leadership is now required, and I have complete confidence that the council will be able to choose and work with an interim city manager as Mr. Morton departs. But this is not a time for panic or knee-jerk reactions. We must stay calm, make a well-thought-out plan, and execute it. I can tell you that as a master scuba diver trainer, I have seen things go from calm seas and pleasant days to a storm of chaos 130 feet underwater, with divers' lives hanging in the balance. I can tell you that from my experience, that is precisely the time that unity, leadership, and situational control will bring things back in line. Tonight, we find ourselves 130 feet underwater. What happens next depends on you and how you weather the storm. The people of Palm Coast deserve calm seas and pleasant days, and I have full confidence that you'll be able to bring us there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Can we get the wireless mic for...
Dan Priati, resident of Palm Coast, and I'd like my assistant to read something for me. That's okay?
Absolutely.
Hi, my name's Nicole Sakes. So, Dear Mayor and City Council, as you said, he's a resident of Palm Coast and Flagler County. He has been a licensed general contractor in the state of Florida since 2013, and a state-certified pool contractor since 2014. His license has never been suspended or revoked in Flagler County or the entire state. We do have proof of that from the Growth Management Director of Flagler County and an email as well. He qualifies about three separate companies with his license, one of which is Aqua Pools and Spas. He was recently made aware of a Channel 9 news story and interview that published a naughty list complied by the City of Flagler County and published an interview showing the company and untrue misleading comments regarding himself and Aqua Pools. It is true that he does have a long history with the city and has been involved in many other construction contracts, excuse me, including the installation of swimming pools for about 20 years. He is a veteran and a disabled contractor. What is not true are comments regarding his license and mannerisms on how he has handled certain business-related situations with city officials and employees. Again, his license has never been suspended, revoked in the state of Florida. Excuse me. I have an email from the Growth Management Director, like I've already showed. These allegations are false, and in fact, his license is active and has never been suspended since activated in July of 2013. What is true is that he's had multiple issues with Mr. Jay Mar and Jay Mar Only, who has had a history of going after his license for many years for unknown reasons. I have from what he considers a well-professional relationship with all city officials and employees. As a result of his publication of the naughty list, he's received numerous calls regarding the license and ability to pull permits, causing current customer and future customers to question the ability to complete such jobs. I have had customers threaten to cancel existing contracts, calls to cancel appointments for new proposals of new work. We've had numerous contract signings from last week that were canceled and calls weren't answered due to that. This is a lifeblood of his business and the dozen employees, including Aqua Pools and Spas and Builder Source. All within five days, as a result of this list, unless this is a timely resolved manner and public reaction of this naughty list, his business will continue to be significantly affected in adverse way. It appears this naughty list contains false information, and that was published to injure and simply ignore the television interviews. Untrue comments about him and the company that are contained within the naughty list. He asked that the city officials give a public apology across all media platforms, all news journals, as well as Channel 9 Orlando News, who produced this naughty list. He under... I'm going to finish my statement. Thank you. I understand this naughty list was not in any of current city's administration, and this was complied by past disgruntled city employees, specifically Jay Mar. I would also like to add, since the city manager, Matt Morton, has taken over, the city culture, attitude, and outlook has been the most positive he's seen in 20 years as a contractor. He asked the city to retract his recognition, for he has been one of the best city managers of Palm Coast has ever had. And that is my statement. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Guys, I appreciate the applause. Tonight, where it's really important that we create a culture of unity, so if we could hold our applause, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Janie Holly, Palm Coast. Y'all know why I'm here. The city clerk has given y'all a picture. It has a little notation on it. That picture was taken May 24th. That was the day that seven dump trucks, two big box truck, and the gentleman who comes through pulling his Kubota equipment, that I call Kubota guy, came through twice. That is the dust from one dump truck coming by. That happens seven times that day. I keep my patio door open so the dogs can run in and out. That way, I don't have to get up for... But that dust is not healthy. It comes in my house. It permeates. It's ridiculous that this construction traffic and these commercial vehicles and multiple dump trucks are continuing to come through here. This morning, before 10 o'clock, three dump trucks at 8:36 this morning, Kubota guy. It's getting to the point to where it's simply not healthy to have all this dust stirred up, day in and day out, and that doesn't even, you know, factor in the ones that come through in the middle of the night that sound like they're on a drag strip. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Brian Budka. Councilman Clufus has stated in a recent interview, and I quote, "My question is, do you feel a responsibility, before you put these numbers out to the public, that you have done research to back it up, to at least the first degree of certainty? Otherwise, you're spreading rumors. That's very serious." Unquote. I could not agree more. The information provided to and by the city needs to have research to back it up. Consider, for example, traffic engineer Mr. Gronwald's response to comments questioning the decision to close Slow Way. He stated, "If the objective is to get rid of the aggressive traffic from the residential neighborhood, the only option is to close the road on Slow Way." In response to the mayor's question of why other options were not considered, Mr. Morton replied, "We get so focused on what we think is right in front of us instead of considering options. We did not bring multiple options to the council. We did not complete a full-term analysis," is the short answer. It is clear that Mr. Gronwald, Mr. Morton, and the city have not done the research necessary to justify closing Slow Way. As Mr. Clufus has stated, this is very serious. It is also clear that numerous council members have framed the discussion about Slow Way closure as an inconvenience versus potentially saving someone's life. The inconvenience is forcing residents to drive Seminole Woods Boulevard and Route 1 versus using Slow Way and County Road 325. A resident has stated that they use County Road 325 because they're afraid to drive on the high-speed roads like Seminole Woods Boulevard and Route 1. Let's do some research. The FDOT database of traffic accidents lists that since 2012, which is all they have, there are zero accidents with injuries in the neighborhood on Slow Way or County Road 325. However, during the same period of time in the vicinity of the neighborhood on Seminole Woods Boulevard and Route 1, there are 14 crashes with fatalities and dozens of crashes with injuries. Doing the research shows that forcing the residents to use Seminole Woods Boulevard and Route 1 dramatically increases their risk of injury and death. There is no hard data to justify the closing of Slow Way, but there is data against the closure. Consider the following. After Seminole Woods Boulevard was repaired, Mr. Gronwald characterized the traffic he observed in the neighborhood as "no big deal." Mr. Gronwald also noted, contacted Flagler County Sheriff, and they said they'd rather see Slow Way stay open. FDOT data shows that closing Slow Way will increase the risk of serious accidents for the residents. Local residents overwhelmingly oppose the closure. The sheriff is against it. Traffic that is no big deal cannot justify risking the safety of neighborhood residents and myself. In conclusion, we should not make decisions based on unsubstantiated statements, but on research. The research before the council does not justify the closing of Slow Way. For the safety of the residents, the shitty council should permanently table this issue.
Thank you. Next speaker. Okay. Do we have a video? Did Celia send in a video? Public comment? I thought I received an email. Nope. Okay. Closing public comment. I'll bring it back. I'll try to address every question. Safety on Simran, I would like to thank our staff for jumping on this issue, communicating with the residents on Simran, and trying to formulate a strategy to come up with a solution that is both viable and effective. I believe that we'll be debriefed on the situation as we progress through Simran, and we're going to continue to work with the residents to see how we can improve safety on those streets. So I thank you very much for coming tonight and recognizing the city's efforts to try to work with the residents on Simran Drive to come up with a solution. And it doesn't happen immediately, and I appreciate your understanding that this is a process to go through the different studies and the different options. So thank you very much for your patience, but also for your recognition that there are individuals trying very hard to solve this problem behind the scenes. Mr. Mayo, attacking local rule from the state level is always an issue. Every year, during legislative sessions, for the rest of the public, our local rule is what allows us as a municipality to have rules that differ ourselves from other cities across the country, and it is easier for lobbyists to lobby at the state level to remove the ability for a local government to govern itself, because then you can have things passed at the state level that we have no control of. Preemption is something that is always fought against. We have lobbyists with the League of Cities and our own city lobbyists that constantly are in the position to support the city, to try to uphold our local rule so that we, as a governing body, have the ability to create legislation that differs Palm Coast from our neighboring cities and the rest of Florida. But that is an excellent point, and we should be asking our local elected officials on why they're trying to preempt or remove local rule and the ability for us to govern ourselves. Mr. McDonald, update on the metal detector? I don't have a succinct answer. If I could pass this to Mr. Morton for an update on the metal detector?
So, excuse me, in the last meeting I had with staff on the safety plan, the metal detectors are in order. Unfortunately, they're on back order like so many things, and they are ordered and on their way to arrive for installation, is my understanding. So those should be coming, hopefully, in the next couple of weeks.
Excellent. Thank you. Probably the supply chain issue that's plaguing many different industries back up. The East Section, East Hampton Bridge, I'm also unfamiliar. I'm not... I know the bridge we're speaking about, but I'm not sure that I've actually visualized the logs that are beneath the bridge. Do we have any update on that, Mr. Morton? I'm not intimately familiar.
That one has a lot of complex moving parts. Carl, are you able to address sort of the work order and what's transpiring? I know there was recently in a neighborhood meeting that was conducted. Maybe you could bring us up to speed on that. Thank you very much.
Yes, they are correct. We did go in and line some major pipes. Obviously, East Hampton has one way in and out of that neighborhood, and during an inspection process, those pipes were in fairly poor condition, so we went ahead and lined the pipes to reinforce those pipes and get them back to a strong condition. We did start a major improvement project. The East Section, through our enhanced stormwater program, identified the East Section as an area that needed some stormwater capacity improvements. Part of that, we've already started with those pipe linings and some ditch cleaning. That project that they referenced, some trees coming down, had to do with the canal dredging. That is one where the contractor got a little head start on the project. We did hold a public meeting here a few weeks back. They are lining up to, I think on last Friday, they started removing those trees that came down. So they are back into work beginning, and it's really to enhance the stormwater flow for that whole East Section.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Carl. Addressing the naughty list, I personally, addressing this, I will go ahead and apologize for the process that was unavailable for offering insight and transparency in this process and the ability for someone to appeal or interact and be notified about the process. I'm fairly confident that the rest of our council will have, during our comments, we can address this along with other issues, I'm certain. So is that acceptable?
Yeah, as long as we address it tonight.
Absolutely. Yep, just following. Absolutely. So thank you, and that will be addressed, certainly. Slow Way is certainly an evolving situation, and that is something that I think the council, and personally, I would say, seems simple on the outside, but now that we're delving into it and seeing both sides, there are more questions that have been raised, and it is an evolving situation where we're trying to collect data and analyze for a solution that's applicable that doesn't necessarily... Yeah, that appeases both sides. Anything to add, Mr. Morton?
Yeah, I don't know if it's helpful, but that research has been getting done, including the accident data, the conversations with more county entities. That is scheduled to come back on the 22nd, and it is for options, is my understanding, for council to discuss with the community and consider.
Excellent. Thank you. And the last action that we had on this was that we were going to engage the other municipal entities that are involved with this so that we can have a global plan to actually attack this. Okay. I believe that addresses all public comment. Moving on to presentations and proclamations.
Minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. First is the order of the minutes of City Council approval for the May 18th, 2021 business meeting and the May 19th special business meeting. Do I have a motion for the approval of these minutes?
I'll make that motion.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes four to zero. Now, moving on to presentations and proclamations. The first item, Item 2, Proclamation, Palm Coast Garden Club Week. I will be presenting a proclamation. If anyone is here in attendance to receive this, please meet me at the microphone. Counsel, if I may, I'd like to address directly. Whereas gardeners continually seek to add beauty, splendor, fragrance, and nutrition to our lives through the growing of herbs, vegetables, foliage, and flowers, and whereas by nurturing the resources available to us from Mother Earth, gardeners promote a healthy lifestyle that lasts for generations, helping to reduce stress in the world and embellishing the natural splendor we see around us. Whereas, the Garden Club at Palm Coast was established in our city in 1974 for members to share their knowledge and love of nature and gardening and involve themselves in such activities as sponsoring summer camp and educational scholarships, perpetuating traditions of our Arbor Day event, and contributing robust plans to the infirmed or those less fortunate in our community. Whereas, the selection of the month by the Garden Club at Palm Coast has recognized hundreds of local homes whose owners continue to create outstanding landscape features to enhance the charm and beauty of our community. And whereas, by advocating for their 2021 goal for Palm Coast to recognize that brighter and colorful days are ahead, the Garden Club at Palm Coast furnishes challenging and productive horticulture activity ahead for all of our citizens, whether they are true cultivators or simply plant lovers. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, the Palm Coast Mayor and the City Council recognize the week of June 6th, 2021 to June 12th, 2021, as Palm Coast Garden Club Week, and we encourage our citizens to come grow with our Garden Club at Palm Coast members and welcome the care and charismatic detail that they contribute to give our community such a valuable, strong quality of life. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, Item 3 is a presentation of certificates to the graduating students of the City of Palm Coast 49th Class of the Citizens Academy. Excellent. And as a side note, I would just like to thank everyone who's in attendance tonight, who was a part of our Citizens Academy, to recognize that you are now ambassadors for the city, and thank you for being so persistent during this time of COVID, that I know I met digitally with our group. It was fantastic, and I was really ecstatic to see how many participants we had, even in a digital world. So thank you very much, and I hope that you get to visit our facilities. So thank you very much, and I hope that you get to visit our facilities physically in the future to see with your own eyes what exactly goes on behind the scenes. So thank you.
Okay, we're going to call the names of the graduates, and when you call your name, if you'll just come up, and then at the end, we'll take a picture in front of council. Kelly Knott. Barb Lovecamp. Greg Lovecamp. Michael Martin. Jan Wolf. Jim Wolf. Geraldine Wright. Andre Wright. Our students come up, and we'll take a quick photo.
Would you like City Council to stand behind, or?
Yes, you guys will stand, and that way we can see everything. Work them out.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. It will. Yeah, yeah. Only one though.
Yeah, if you want to open up so you can see your names, that would be great. I'm going to take three. One, two, three. One, two, three. And one, two, three. Thank you, ladies.
Should I? Okay. Congratulations to everyone graduating. It is a tremendous program that we have multiple ways to sign up, and I encourage everyone to at least investigate what the Palm Coast Citizens Academy is all about, because it really offers insight into the backend workings of our utility, our fire department, public works, really what makes up the city. So thank you, guys. Moving on, we have a Resolution Four, which is approving a letter of support for Flagler County Public Safety Half-Cent Sales Tax. At the moment, we don't have the county representatives in the room. If the rest of the council would be willing to move this item to the end of the resolution so we could give them time to arrive, we would move forward on to Item Five and then fall back to Item Four.
I'm actually not willing to do that.
No?
I don't see why we would be supporting a county tax increase. I'm opposed to our supporting a county tax increase. If they're not here, day late, dollar short. What can I say?
Day late, half cent short, I suppose. But I would prefer to have the county representatives here to at least have them voice what the half-cent sales tax is all about and how it can positively impact our community.
They can certainly come back and visit another time, can't they?
Okay. Would we?
From a parliamentary standpoint, if the council is unwilling to consent to the change, then it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to amend the agenda as requested by the acting mayor. That motion would need a second, and then there could be discussion as well as a vote. Like any other motion, it would require a majority of the council, which would be three votes.
And if we were to amend this agenda, would we be able to re-add it on our meeting that would be on the 22nd?
It would be whatever the motion could be. I understand the options. It would be to move it to the, as you suggested, councilman, it would be to move it to the end of the resolutions, or it can simply be tabled to the next business meeting, whichever is the preference of this council.
Make a motion to table it to the next business meeting.
I'll second that. All those in favor of tabling this?
Well, Mr. Councilmember, you actually have the gavel, so we're going to need someone else to second that.
I'll second that.
All right, now we've got a second.
Perfect. Okay.
Discussion.
Bring it back to our council. Any comments? Nope. Okay, all those in favor of tabling this issue, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those against?
You mean tabling or passing it to the next?
We're.
The motion on the floor is to table this item, this agenda item, to the next business meeting.
Okay, correct. Okay. Thank you.
Excellent. All those against? Opposed. Understood. Motion passes three to one.
Three to one.
Okay, moving on. Resolution number five, approving the state revolving fund loan application for the construction of the wastewater treatment plant number two expansion project. Mr. Morton?
Thank you, General Mayor. City Council, tonight before you is a resolution involving the state revolving fund loan application for construction of wastewater treatment plant number two expansion, and I believe we have Alex Blake to present this item to you tonight.
Sir, we can't hear you.
Not at all. Can you talk to the mic, please?
Can we do a mic check just to make sure? Matt, just if you could just make sure we're talking into the microphone.
Tonight, is that working now?
Excellent.
I can't speak any closer. Resolution approving the state revolving fund loan application for the construction of the wastewater treatment plant number two expansion, and we have public works staffing, or stormwater staff, excuse me, including Alex Blake here to present tonight.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good evening, council. Let's see if this thing's on. We on? Hear me?
I think so. Everyone good? Excellent.
Yeah, the state revolving fund application, this is a second phase of our process. If you recall, we've already entered design. We received SRF loan funding for the design of the plant, which is nearly complete, or the plant expansion, I should say. This is to construct the plant to an additional 2 million gallons per day wastewater treatment capacity. We need that capacity with our current projections of development and growth within the city. And this expansion from our current projection should basically hold us over for about a good eight to 10 years. And what is involved with the loan is it's a 20-year interest-free loan, $18,150,000 to cover the cost of the construction. So we intend, once the loan with the resolution passes, we'll send the loan application into the state, and that will basically set us up to begin for our advertisement and bidding of the project, and we'll have funding in place to do the construction.
Excellent.
Yep.
Council, just for posterity, these expansion projects are modular in nature so that as we continue to grow as a city, we'll be able to add on essentially these additional modules that will add about 2 million gallons of capacity per day. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yep. So pretty standard, and this is as planned. Do we have any comment by our council? Okay, do I have a motion for?
The motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor of resolution approving the state revolving fund loan application, say aye. 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 All those against? Motion passes four to zero. Thank you. Resolution six, approving a joint participation agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation in the amount of $204,206 for eligible reimbursable expenses related to the I-95 SR-100 interchange landscape improvement project. Matt, would you like to introduce this?
Yes, thank you, General Mayor. City Council, as you mentioned, and this is a reimbursable grant project, is my understanding, in cooperation with the state, specifically related to enhancement of the interchange area, and we have Carl here to introduce this item for you tonight.
Yes, good evening. This item is for a FDOT grant. This is to enhance the landscape at the interchange of SR-100, I-95. The city had received a grant in the past for this particular interchange. However, DOT had constructed many improvements, a turn lane to merge onto the ramp, they converted the dry ponds to wet ponds, they added a path along the north side, they repaved the ramps, they added street lighting. So during all their projects, they've impacted and damaged a lot of the landscaping. So as part of their efforts to correct those, they are awarding the city a grant to go in and replace and restore the landscaping that was completed and to enhance it some.
Excellent. Does that include the fountains that were present? There were lights at one time. Did something happen where they got struck by lightning at one point or something like that?
There's various things that have happened. Lightning did affect the fountains a few times. The lighting was torn up as part of those enhancements. They don't cover, there's certain things that they aren't eligible. Lighting is one of those. We are not going in to do any work with the lighting on this particular one. We will still light the signage that's there, but the landscaping, no.
Understood. Excellent. Counsel, do we have any comment on this? No. No. Making Palm Coast more beautiful with a grant from FDOT seems positive to me. Do we have any more comment or a motion to pass this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Excellent. We have a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
We need to open it up to the public.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, inappropriate. Public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would make a comment on item number six? They can approach the podium now.
I want to make a comment.
That would be appropriate.
Yep. You can come forward, yes.
So I submitted, my name is Michael Arnold Palm Coast. I submitted an inquiry in regards to a bond that was issued back in 2006, and the estimated value of that bond was $220 million. Where'd the money go? We're taking out another loan when there's already a loan against a wastewater treatment for the City of Palm Coast. My only question.
If there's anyone else?
Yep. Any other comment? Public speaking? Public speakers, approach the podium. Closing public comment. Would it be appropriate to address that comment now?
That would, absolutely. If there's anyone from staff that could address that, Helena or someone else from wastewater?
Thank you.
Well, Helena is approaching. I just want the public to know that this is 0% loan. It's from the state. It's 0% because it's for the betterment of the environment, and it is not secured by the tax dollars of the citizens, taxpayers. It's secured by the users of the wastewater treatment facilities.
Yes, that is correct. As the rates are calculated, they are calculated to include.
Can you speak into the microphone a little closer, Helena?
I said that is correct. When the rates are calculated, they're taken into account for the construction of these facilities. I believe the bond that was asked about earlier was what was used to purchase the utility, and then additional funds were withdrawn for projects of the utility.
Yep. Thank you for clearing that up. Thank you, Helena. No, thank you.
So the appropriate, at this time, given the public comments and the responses, is there any request by any of the council members to revisit the prior vote? All right. Let's let the record reflect. The citizen participation was afforded and received, and questions were answered, and there is not a motion for reconsideration on the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, so now we can bring it back to this council for item number six, which we would look for a motion to approve the resolution for the joint participation agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation.
I made that motion.
I second it.
Excellent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four to zero. Okay, moving on, we're on to ordinance's second read. Ordinance number seven is a voluntary annexation. Would you like to introduce the item, Bill?
On my agenda, we have a pre-annexation agreement, JTL. Was that removed?
That was removed at the, because the agreement could not be.
Okay.
So that the ordinance is actually in the background text that they've requested.
Just want to make sure.
Yep. There's an updated background text.
All right.
To have it, Bill, with regards to the applicant requesting continuance to a time certain of June 22nd, the next business meeting, as well as staff, so that they can finalize the pre-annexation agreement.
Well, then there needs to be opened up, and there needs to be action taken to continue it, consistent with the city clerk's announcement. Could you repeat that, please?
Sure. The applicant and staff.
Could you speak into the, so the audience can hear?
Applicant and staff have requested that the item be continued to June 22nd time certain to allow for staff and the applicant with legal to finalize the pre-annexation agreement, and that would be what is up for council consideration.
Excellent. So they're asking to move it forward, but I have the gavel, so I can't motion.
I'll make that motion to move it.
I'll second it.
This is a motion to continue, so it would be appropriate for any public comment?
Open it up for public comment. Anyone would like to comment, approach the podium. You'll have three minutes, once you state your name for the record. Nope. Closing public comment. I'll bring it back to this council. Move of approval?
We got a motion, second.
Motion second? Yep. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Perfect. Motion passes four to zero. Now we can move on to ordinance number seven, which is the voluntary annexation of 40.7 acres of 3,500 feet west of Seminole Woods Boulevard on the north side of the Iroquois Waterway, aka JTL Grand Landings.
All right, counsel, this is the title. I'm going to read it for the second reading. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, to annex property to be included within the corporate area and city limits of the City of Palm Coast, providing for the annexation of approximately 40.7 acres of property described in Exhibit A to this ordinance. Lying in the areas proximate to the existing city limits of the City of Palm Coast, Flagler County, Florida, providing for annexation in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Section 171 044 Florida statutes, providing for annexation of real property, amendment of corporate or the city limits, providing for rights and privileges resulting from the annexation, the effect of the annexation upon land uses, providing for an effect on ad valorem taxes for effect on businesses and occupations, severability, conflicts, and providing for an effective date. This is the second reading.
Counsel, do we have any additional comments? Is there additional presentation? This is the second reading, second time we've heard this item. Nope. We can open it up for public comment. If anyone would like to comment on item number seven, please approach the podium, state your name, and you'll have three minutes. Okay, I'll close public comment and bring it back to this council for a motion.
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those against say nay. Motion passes four to zero. Next, ordinance second read is amending Section 4938 Code of Ordances. Bill, will you introduce this?
Certainly. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, relating to backflow prevention devices, amending Section 4938 Code of Ordances of the City of Palm Coast, providing for severability, codification, providing for conflicts, and for an effective date. Again, second read. Mr. Mayor.
And for posterity for the public, that this is basically an update to our code of ordinances for what we're already doing in the field for this updated methodology. Do we have any comment before we open it up for public comment, counsel? Nope. I'll open it up for public comment. If anyone would like to make a comment on ordinance number eight, amending Section 94938, please approach the podium. You'll have three minutes, once you state your name for the record. Okay, see no one approaching. I'll close public comment. Bring it back to this council for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those against? All right, motion passes four to zero. Next, ordinance's first read.
All right. Again, first read, this is the title of this ordinance. It's an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of the official zoning map as established in Section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code, amending the official zoning map for 10 acres, more or less, of certain real property described as tax ID parcel number 2211305545500010, generally located 1,800 feet north of Whiteview Parkway on the east side of US-1, being more particularly described and attached to Exhibit A, from light industrial, industrial one to high-intensity commercial or COM3 zoning district, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.[1727.47] and providing for an effective date. Counsel, this is a quasi judicial matter. That means that if there have been any ex parte communications that any of you have received prior to this evening's hearing, those should be disclosed at this time.
Counsel?
Yep.
Yes, I view that the owner of that area contacted me, and the only thing I did, I directed him to, to the proper, you know, department. That was, I didn't have any discussions, but I did direct him to the property department.
Thank you, sir.
Understood, and I have, I have none. Staff?
Thank you. Good evening, council members. Ray Tyner, Deputy Chief Development Officer. Yeah, this, this project was annexed into the city of Palm Coast. The last portion was annexed back in 2006, and actually, when it was prior to annexation to the city of Palm Coast, it had a zoning designation of commercial when it was in the county. So myself, you know, talking with the property owner, that, you know, if you're familiar with the Alamo on, on US 1, that, that front building portion is obviously constructed as retail and, and commercial. So Jose Papa, our senior planner, will have the details of the rezoning, but it, this is, you know, almost like a cleanup of, of going back and, and doing it where, where it should be in the first place of commercial zoning.
Thank you, Mr. Tyner.
Good evening, members of City Council. Jose Papa for the Community Development Department. This subject is a tenant plus or minus acre parcel. It is developed currently with about 95,000 square feet of self-storage and another 25,000 square feet divided into three multi-tenant buildings. I think most of us are familiar, anyone who's driven on US 1 is familiar with the Alamo Business Center. As you can see here, this is the, the building that's currently constructed on site, and there's more photos. The existing flume, as you, the existing future land use map designation for the subject parcel, as you can see on the map on the left-hand side, is, is mixed use. The current zoning of the subject property is light industrial or industrial 1. This application is, is a proposed amendment to change the zoning designation from light industrial 1, as shown in pink here, to a high intensity commercial zoning district. With any zoning map amendment, staff reviews the criteria that's established in our land development code, and looking at that criteria, staff, staff provides an analysis of its consistency with those criteria. First criteria is the consistency with a comprehensive plan. This proposed amendment to the zoning map is consistent with the policies for directing development to where you have infrastructure availability and expanding urban uses only where infrastructure is available. Regarding its, the criteria on its impact on the natural environment, there is no additional impact on the natural environment since the site is developed. And regarding the criteria on impact on public facilities, again, there will be no additional impact since, again, the site is already developed. Its impact on the economy, staff does not perceive a negative impact on the economy in the surrounding area. What the rezoning will do is to provide for a great, greater variety of economic opportunities than the current zoning. The light industrial zoning district allows outdoor storage, but in terms of what would be permitted within that multi-tenant building, it is a little more restrictive in terms of the types of offices that you can have within the buildings. If you're, if you have an office that's related to the building industry, you're allowed to go in there, but if you're just a general office, let's say you're a dentist office or a doctor's office, that would not be permitted within that multi-tenant building. And the other part of that is that the retail opportunities are, would also now be permitted by this zoning change. You do have a sandwich shop in there, and that went in there through means of a special exception. With the change to a commercial 3, it goes in there as permitted as of right, so you don't need to take that additional step. Again, just providing for an expansion of potential renters to that multi-tenant building and providing it in an area that's in need of additional retail space at this time. You have the Town and Country Industrial Park across the street, which is fairly full, and same thing with the, and, and so, again, with the Alamo here, and it's new avail, new available space that would help with, with fostering the use of that space. So changes in circumstances or conditions, again, owners responding to the change in the market for commercial space in this area. Its compatibility with proximate uses and development patterns, it's, it's compatible with the uses to the north, which is, which would be commercial, which is commercially zoned, although it is vacant right now. It's consistent with, or compatible with the uses to the west, which are industrial uses. And the area to the east is a conservation easement, and the parcel to the south is the African American Cultural Center. Again, maybe having additional retail space here could provide opportunities for those who visit the African American Cultural Center to also shop in, in this, in this center. And does it accomplish a legitimate public use? It provides additional retail, commercial office opportunities in an area with limited amount of such uses at this time. The, the planning and land development regulation board did hold a public hearing on this item in June, and at their meeting, they received public comment and provided the recommendation that City Council approve this proposed zoning map amendment from light industrial 1 to high intensity commercial. The applicant is here to answer any questions, but staff is here to answer any additional questions from council this time.
Thank you, Jose. May I ask, was there any opposition from the respondents?
There, there were no comments or opposition to this proposed zoning change.
Excellent. Counsel, in my opinion, this rezoning from light industrial to commercial is just in response to the market conditions. It's almost a slight downzoning, so this is, you know, in my opinion, a response to the market, but comments?
I fully agree.
Excellent. Okay, so we can open it up for public comment. If anyone would like to comment on ordinance number nine, please come forward, state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes. Once you do so. I see no one coming forward. We'll close public comment, bring it back to this council.
Did the applicant wish to make any?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nope.
And I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those against? All right, motion passes four to zero. Other business. Thank you, staff. Other business, item number 10, appointing a canvassing board member and an alternate for the 2021 special election. Who would like to introduce this item? Virginia? Matt, I know that we, we would like to open this up to the public, but what's the best way to do so?
I think this is a Virginia item.
I think so, too.
Mayor, City Council, we have a standalone special election.
Microphone.
And on July 27th, and with that comes canvassing. In accordance with the ordinance and the resolution adopted at the special meeting last week, council had put into motion the date for the special election. As part of that, we have to appoint a member to the canvassing board and an alternate to the canvassing board as well. This is totally council's appointees that, that you would bring forth to discuss. I gave you an email that said, please make sure you bring forth an appointee of your choosing and provide information. Councilmember Danko has brought forth an appointee. I did provide you with that at the start of this meeting, as well as in paper format in your email. So Mayor Branquino, you should, if you have access to your email, you can look at that information, and this is a council decision that is to be made this evening.
Okay. Can we open it up for public comment?
Yes.
Excellent. Anyone who would like to approach, state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes for assigning a member to the canvassing board and an alternate member for the 2021 special election. No one coming forward? Okay, I'll bring it back to this council for comment.
Yeah, I, I'd like to nominate David Valinsky. He's been a resident here in Palm Coast since 2012. He's a graduate of East Connecticut State University. He has served in many law enforcement roles. He was a, he's a former police officer from Groton, Connecticut, and a special agent for NCIS, and I know we've all seen the TV show, but he's the real deal. He's also worked for two of our Flagler sheriffs, including Jim Manfred and also Rick Staley. One, I might note, a Democrat. One, I might note, a Republican. He's worked for both. Presently, he is chief of staff for Lieutenant Colonel Oliver North. I've known David now for a few years, and I would like to place his name into nomination.
Excellent. Is there a second?
I'll second it, but before I second it, I would like to comment if possible.
You, it would be appropriate, under the procedure, to second it, so then we can have discussion.
Okay. All right, then I'll second it.
Okay, perfect. We can bring it back for comment now. Go ahead.
I, I, I don't know David Valinsky personally, but after what I briefly read over here, he seems like a person to handle this type of situations. And plus, even if he would be a person with any second intentions, I thought he would be, he or anybody would be able to do anything, because knowing our supervisor elections, let me tell you, she's a straight shooter, and she will keep him in place, him or her or anybody. So therefore, I'm glad that somebody brought David up to a step.
I would second those comments directly. I think this is a position that we don't necessarily, it's kind of, not a thank, it's a thankless job. This is a, it's, it's a lot of work, so thank you, David, for volunteering.
David is here in the audience, if you'd like him to stand up. David, if you could stand up, please. There he is, right there.
Thank you, David.
And we just need to, whoever council appoints as the canvassing board member and the alternate, to make sure they are available on all of those days, because those are set in stone.
Understood. Okay, so we have a motion, a second, and it's back to this council?
Just for the public's purposes, this is an administrative matter that is required of the City Council by the city charter. City charter provides that for the purposes of certifying absentee ballots and election results, the city clerk and a representative from the city designated by the council shall be known as the canvassing board. So that's what the purpose of, of this agenda item is.
Excellent. Okay, I'll bring it back to this council for a vote. All those in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
We need, we need an alternate as well.
Yep.
I see somebody out there that could do it, if he's interested. Mr. Martin, would you be interested to be in the second?
I would. Depends on the dates. I don't have a conflict with, to say, county commission meetings, but I would be interested.
Do you have the dates?
We do. They're in the agenda packet. So July 9th is the logic and accuracy test for 10:00 AM, then the canvas of the absentee ballots, July 14, July 19, July 23rd, July 27, 12:00 PM, and 6:00 PM.
Is, can you tell me, is July 19th a Monday?
Yes, and that begins at 11:00 AM.
I think I have a conflict with the mosquito commission meetings that day.
Okay. That would be just, if you appoint him as the alternate, as long as we have the full board, we can continue with the meeting. We would have a quorum.
I think that's fair.
And then July, sorry, also July 30th is a Friday. That's where we certify the election results.
That's what I said. The only conflict I know is I have the 10 o'clock mosquito commission meeting.
Okay.
Understood. So counsel, I think that's fair, that since it is a secondary position, that, that one meeting, that is conflict, should be okay, so...
Yeah, I think it's good.
Okay, excellent. Counsel, if there's a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
I just need the name, I just need the name of the person. I couldn't get it. I'm sorry.
Michael Martin?
Okay.
Mosquito.
Yep, from the mosquito-controlled district. Yep, absolutely.
Anyone from the public?
Anyone who would like to publicly comment on this, approach the podium, state your name. You'll have three minutes. All right, I'll close public comment. Bring it back to this council for a motion.
I think we made the motion, didn't we?
Well, there's, need a second, yeah. It's already seconded?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. All those in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
All right, motion passes. Or all those against say aye? All right, motion passes four to zero. Thank you very much for your volunteering. It's, I'm not sure if you're volunteered or voluntold, but that works. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. We only have two items, but if anyone from the public would like item number 11 or 12 removed from the consent agenda, please come to the podium, state your name, which item you would like removed from the consent agenda, and we will speak about it. I see no one approaching the podium. I'm going to close public comment and bring back to this council for a motion for, to approve the consent agenda as read.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those against say nay. Consent agenda passes four to zero. Okay, moving on to the next item, which is the second addition of public participation in today's meeting. You can approach the podium, state your name for the record, and you're going to have three minutes. Once you do so...
Just for the public's knowledge, this is pursuant to our council rules and procedures. We always want everyone to have a two bites, or two opportunities, but not two bites of the apple. So what I mean by that is if you've already spoken at the beginning of the meeting, then you will not have the opportunity to speak again at the end of the meeting. But other than that, welcome.
Good evening. My name is James Lee. I'm a resident Palm Coast. I'm a freelance journalist, and I've been anonymously given some communications that are disturbing to me. They involve the former mayor and the city manager, and the apparent interference in the mayoral election. I'll be releasing these to the media tomorrow. I'm concerned because there may have been...
Oh.
There, there may have been...
Can you speak into the microphone? Can you speak into the microphone so that...
Speak into the micro...
Yes, thank you very much.
I'm concerned because there may have been some violation of ICMA tenants by, by the city manager. I'm going to read a little bit from a letter that was written in July 2020 by a witness in investigation who wanted to remain at the time, and I don't have their name. They wanted to remain anonymous because they feared for their job. This person has since resigned. This was in regards to the sexual harassment allegations made against Michael Shoddy when he was running for mayor. This person wrote, "I also want to preemptively state that, to my knowledge, Michael Shoddy never sexually harassed anyone at City Hall. I saw a comment on Facebook by one of Mayor Holland's friends, Ken McDowell, alleging there were serious, or excuse me, sexual harassment allegations. Mayor Holland and Matthew Morton have both stated to me numerous times over the past several weeks that they intend to ruin Michael Shoddy and take his house and everything he owns. They have said they will make sure he doesn't get a job in the state of Florida after this is over. We do know that those allegations were proven to be false. I believe that the former mayor and the city manager, from what I've seen in these emails, it appears to me that they broke the law by interfering in the election, and I'm asking for a formal investigation about it. I will also provide these emails and communications to City Council."
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hi, my name is Alyssa Paffrath. This is regarding the poorly planned pickleball stadium project. I'm sorry, Morton was quick to inform me that this is not a stadium. In fact, all that money only includes plans for six courts, six. When this was first brought forward, there were talk of tournaments and how you needed 10 courts to achieve that. So there's been nothing but inconsistencies regarding this topic. At this time, I feel, and a lot of our other citizens do as well, that this project should be tabled until after the new mayor takes office, so it can be thoroughly examined and, I don't know, actual facts come forth. I understand why Mr. Morton resigned. He rarely has an answer for any questions that are thrown this, his way. We had a meeting regarding this pickleball nonsense, and I heard an alarming number of "I don't knows." And I'm still waiting on those budgets you promised to send us, to send along. I've emailed you in the interim, but I've received no response. I hope you can find the time, or perhaps your two assistants, I'm sorry, executives, can help you out. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Next speaker?
Robin Peterson. I am opposed on accepting Mr. Morton's resignation. I want him fired immediately. He has tampered with elections. He has tampered with the Florida Ethics Committee investigation. This is unacceptable behavior. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? None? Okay, I'll close public comment. Bring it back to this council. A lot of these allegations, I don't, I don't have any comment on these. Matt, you're free to respond to these if, if you want. Otherwise, we can move on to our individual public comments.
I have no idea where they're coming from. People can move on.
Fair enough. Okay, so now we will go to a discussion of City Council matters on the agenda. I'm going to start with Eddie since he's, Mayor Branquino, do you have any discussions for City Council matters on the agenda today?
Not at this time. I may add it at the end, but not at this time.
Okay. And I know that we're going to have at least a few things to address, so I will also pass my chance to address the council at this time. I know the two things that we're going to be speaking about are probably the quote-unquote naughty list, and then also how we move forward as a council to find a solution for city manager replacement in the future. So I think those are both things that we're going to discuss. I would just like to interject myself here to remind our council that we have an opportunity tonight to set the trajectory and the tone for how our council goes about finding our next city manager, who's going to take us into the next evolution of Palm Coast. next city manager, who's going to take us into the next evolution of Palm Coast. And I would just like to take a second to make sure that we're cognizant of all the words that we're choosing while we're having this discussion, to make sure that we offer the best opportunity to have a successful discussion tonight. So, thank you very much, and I'll, Mr. Barbosa, Councilmember Barbosa, if you have anything you'd like to talk about.
The first thing on the naughty list, I was not aware of it, that was going on. I don't agree with it, and I would like to apologize to Dan Priori and to his business AquaPools for those false rumors. And also at this time, I would like to make a motion to hire a city intern, city manager to replace Mr. Morton, and in this motion, I would like to recommend to continue the 30-day payout and waive his physical presence at City Hall. I would like to publicly thank Mr. Morton for his services. And at this time, I would like to introduce my recommendation for city intern. She is well-known, a city employee, well-qualified, well-respected by her peers, and would make a very easy transition for the city. Her name is Denise Bevan. Do I have a second motion?
Uh, s-
Or do we need to talk about that?
So.
There's going to be discussion, we're, there's going to, there's, the motion on the floor is, has nothing to do with, with the caution list.
Okay.
I want to make sure, because there were two items that you addressed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. So I'm sure we're not done with the caution list, but with, but there is, but you did make a motion.
Yes.
And the motion was to appoint Denise Bevan as the interim city manager upon the vacancy created, upon the, the actual vacancy being created by the resignation of the current city manager.
Yes.
So it's that motion, and I believe you also included in that motion that, and I'm not sure I understand this, that the city council would waive the 30-day requirement for Mr. Morton's written notice so that he would be able to resign. His resign, resignation would become effective upon the successful acceptance by Ms. Bevan as the active city manager.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're clear, because these are big steps.
Councilmember Barbosa, so I think it may be beneficial for us as a council and for the public, if we had the opportunity to discuss it, I have, I have more information on exactly how that, if we want to go that route, how that would transpire and the legalities.
Okay.
If you could rescind your motion, if he can rescind his motion, and I swear that we will get back to a position where we, we can actually have that motion.
Tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Is that fair?
I'm open to hear everybody.
Okay, excellent. So he has to formally rescind his?
All right, so are you withdrawing your motion?
Yes.
Okay, so there is no motion on the floor.
Thank you.
So you're still in your comments, Mr. Councilmember Barbosa.
Point of order, Mr. Clufus. Can we move past the, move on to the naughty list, resolve that issue first, and then get into this?
Yeah, that's what he was saying.
Yep, please, if that's-
Yes, that's great, yes.
Excellent. So, Mr. Councilmember Barbosa, your comments are done, we'll go to Councilman Danko.
So I want to address this naughty list. I was unaware of it too, and I certainly understand that Mr. Morton had nothing to do with creating that list. My understanding is, it's our former city manager and our former mayor who created that list. And I realize that list was put together possibly with good intentions to protect our city workers, and I think we do have to protect our city workers. But a secret list is no way to do that, and, and it's absolutely, it's, it's like something out of East Germany, as far as I'm concerned. We, governments do not have secret lists and put citizens on it without giving that citizen a due process, a chance to come in and, and defend their good name. People are innocent until proven guilty in this country, at least the last time I looked. And so I think that list is appalling, I think we all agree it's appalling. And I mean, there's, you know, we could have a list if we have problems with a person attacking a city worker, we can also call the sheriff's department too, and, and we certainly don't want to send a city worker out to a potentially dangerous situation. But I think if we have a list, we need to have some form of due process where, you know, that citizen can be notified, they appear before code enforcement, some sort of body, and present their side of the argument. If it's something violent, like throwing a spear at someone, well, we should be calling the sheriff's department immediately and have that person arrested. So I'd like to amend the agenda, make a motion tonight that we cease using that secret naughty list.
I'll second that.
Okay, so now we have a motion and a second on the floor, and it comes back to the council for comment. I would like to comment, and thank you guys for, and this is a tremendous conversation there. I also did not know about this list, but in the, you hit on several key points. In any type of environment, and I've worked in several businesses that are customer-facing, when you have to deal with customers, there are safety components that are in place. I think the failure that we encountered here, and we should look back as a council retrospectively, say, where did we fail in this? I think there's some type of discretionary decision we have to make our city employees aware of potential dangerous situations and how, how to handle bringing additional presence, however that would be handled. But there also needs to be some type of procedure and notification process. So if you're on this list, you know, and you have the ability to appeal through the appropriate channels. I think the biggest problem that I have with it is, if you're on this list, you don't know. And that city, the city and all municipalities should be transparent, and I could not agree more with that. I do think that there is a place for this type of list, especially because in a customer-service world, when you receive even just, so let's look at our Palm Coast Connect dashboard. When someone calls, we want to see their last five calls and whether or not, you know, they have an angry dog at their house that somehow we have to be aware of. There is a process that, there is a process that needs to occur that will improve our employee's safety. I'm hopeful that we can come to a discussion and figure out how to do that with the processes in place that allows someone the transparency to appeal their existence on this list. But I'm looking for understanding on this council that from a customer support perspective, we do need some type of ability to notate and make our city employees aware when they're going to these residents and addresses, that if there's a potential problem, we're not putting them in harm's way without telling them first.
I fully agree, I just don't think we can keep a secret list, and that's why again, I mean, you know.
Absolutely. If I may, if I may.
Yes.
There's got to be some kind of a process to handle this. It cannot be secret. I completely agree with what everybody's saying. But remember, some kind of documentation shall be kept, because in front of two councilmen not long ago, one gentleman told me that the next time one agent from the city, by May, goes to his property, he'll put a gun to his head. And I said that right in that meeting. I think that should be noted. You remember that? That was in front of me and Councilman Barbosa, when he said that. So we both know, those are the type of people that any list are to protect them. Plus, I think that to create some kind of a list, okay, some kind of a list, and I don't mean secret, maybe we order, speak with, with somebody, maybe from the sheriff's office, if they agree, how should we handle it? Or if there's a way that it could help us in any way, shape, or form, to create some method of putting these people in place, because nobody has the rights to intimidate or threaten to put a gun to their head, okay, to a city agent. And I want to call it agent because it could be from any other department, or city employees. So something has to be done. I did not know about that list, and keeping it secret was not a good idea, will never be a good idea. So, that's my opinion. Thank you.
To Brinkeno, what I believe Danko and Clufus were saying is that they should be note, notified that they are on a list, that those people could be put on a list, but they should be notified.
And then given due process. And then given-
Everybody should be notified.
Yeah.
Not just, not just us, everybody, the people out there, the residents.
Yeah.
Because if they dangerous to a city agent, they, they could be dangerous to anybody.
Fully agree, Councilman Brinkeno.
Councilmembers, I think this council has made itself, themselves, very clear about what your desires are. From a process standpoint, this, this caution list, it's a caution list for employees, is part of a larger document which places responsibilities on city employees and how to deal with, says dealing with difficult customers. So I'm not sure whether that is part of the personnel policies or whether this is a standalone document.
It originated in 2015, is my understanding, by a former, former council member.
Did you speak up?
Sorry. That originated in 2015, I believe, by a former council member who, he was sitting here in City Hall with staff on a daily basis, is the way I've heard the story, was hearing the abuse and proposed this list. I don't know the history after that. So, are you asking how to move forward in a formal document?
Well, what I was suggesting is, is that staff needs clear direction, because I've heard a couple different things. Let's get rid of the list, but is there direction-
I've heard there's also a need for a list.
To get rid of the list, but then to create a process to rightfully achieve the objectives of the, of the list that was faulty, if you will, in the beginning.
We've thought around this this week, I can offer something that's helpful or not. If the purpose for the list exists, I think it needs a lot, one, a guidebook for staff to understand. I think, I think the purpose does exist, to your point, either for staff's safety or to respect a resident's wishes. I think prior to any list, the substance of, of the interaction, if it rises to that, there's been very few since 2015, but it needs to be documented in a police report, not in a, in some statement or on a spreadsheet. The person needs to be notified in writing that they're intended to be put on, and I think the name needs to change, what it really is, there's a situational awareness list or a citizen contact list. The person has an opportunity to appeal that decision, usually it's administrative, it'll be to your new city manager. After that, they have a second appeal to usually some kind of quasi-body, either the code board or a special magistrate. When that's done, they would then be placed on the list. The only thing that the list should be is, is a name if appropriate, an address or location appropriate, and no longer with what happened to Mr. Priori with, with comments from anybody, it should just be, please respond with two people, or citizen has requested no response, or respond with FCSO, just simple instructions to just completely change the nature of this to get it to what it's supposed to be.
I concur, and I believe that as a council, we're unified in the stance that the way that the list was being handled and the way that administratively people were put on and off the list was not, not correct. It was, it was not the way that we would have intended to issue this type of system for analysis to protect our situational awareness for our employees. Now the question would be, do we eliminate this list, or do we amend the motion on the floor to?
Well, I've made the motion that we cease immediately using this list. I think, once we end that, I think the discussion down the road, possibly when we have a new mayor, is to then formulate some better way, as Mr. Morton and Mr. Reichman have suggested, on how to do this properly.
Excellent. And I, I think that may actually may be more appropriate when we have a new city manager.
Right.
Absolutely.
Exactly, yeah.
Yep. So not the destruction of the list, just stopping additional entries to be added to this list?
I don't think we can technically actually destroy the list, it is part of a public record, is it not, Bill?
I'm just trying to keep-
Something we may need to keep.
Sure, it's, 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 it's a document that exists and therefore is a public record. I would suggest that what you could do is simply say that, that is going to be eliminated, it will no longer be used-
That was my, yeah, that was my motion.
-by Palm Coast employees, will no longer be part of this, this product that was created back in 16 or 17.
Thank you.
Yep, but with that verbiage, the only thing that I worry about is potentially, we do not have the details around a situation when we send somebody out to service this customer or whatever situation we're broaching with a city agent, that if we don't notify them about what we know, and they potentially are in a dangerous situation, how do we handle that?
Well, do you keep using the secret list?
Now that it's not secret, now it's public, do we, and if they're potentially dangerous, probably not, right?
That's what I'm saying, it's no longer secret. Make it public, public records.
Right, but I think that's on-
What I, what I understand the council's desires, what I understand that the motion on the floor is, is to eliminate the list, and then to have staff bring back a corrective version of a policy, so that if there was going to be a list, maybe a list, as the city manager had indicated, it's just some sort of documentation of, of directions to city employees from citizens of what, how they want to be contacted by city employees. Because that's really, as I understand, from reading the full, this full policy, that was the objective, was to create direction to city staff on, there are certain addresses where there are certain citizens that don't want to be contacted in a certain way, and so that why it was called a caution list.
I'm curious, Mr. Morton, how quickly could we have staff create a new policy?
I mean, objectively, I don't think it's hard. I mean, I think the most important thing is in interim, there is no list, and no list should be kept, and until council adopts a process, and you guys have public comment, and people are comfortable with whatever it looks like, I mean, it's something that could probably turn around in a few weeks or a month, there's a lot going on with the election, and now you're getting ready to maybe appoint interim city manager, I don't want to speak for them. But I think in the interim, absolutely stop, stop the list, frame it, have a public meeting about it, and, I mean, I think we framed it tonight in concept. If council's comfortable with that, then staff knows the direction of what to bring back.
There is a motion on the floor, it has been seconded.
Any additional comment? Mayor Brinkeno?
No, can you repeat exactly what the motion is, sir? Because I'm having a little trouble.
All right, let me, I will do my, I don't want to, I don't want to speak.
Your best, Bill.
Okay.
I trust you.
Yeah, my understanding is, is that the list will be removed and eliminated, and the direction of staff is to, is to work, to bring back a set of policies with, with not, not the same list, but with an opportunity set in the future, going forward. If there was a need to, to create some sort of designation for the protection of, of an employee, then there would be due process that would be available, and that it would be done in a limited basis, both for the, for the, for the benefit of the, of the employee, but also for the protection of the citizen.
For me.
Well said.
Absolutely.
In agreement?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So we bring it back to this council, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We need citizen comments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, got to do it.
Yeah, even though it's, I'm not on the agenda. Okay, let's open it for public comment. Whoever, yep, whoever would like to comment on this? Three minutes, once you state your name for the record.
So, once again, Michael Arnold, I'm pretty familiar with Salesforce technology, I've used it my whole life in the financial industry. Salesforce has actually a scroll-down menu whenever you're dealing with individuals who are hard to deal with, and especially in finance, I can tell you times and times over again how many people I dealt with, has Holocaust victims and everything else, with the do-not-knock, do-not-call. So when you scroll down menu, when it says forms of contact, you can actually select do-not-knock, do-not-call. It's a, it's a drop-down menu that can be added very easily through Salesforce. So knowing that we're Salesforce, I have used that technology through Siebel Systems, through Salesforce, through every major CRM management system available. So having a list that is considered off the record, by having it, any type of a list, an individual who has any type of post-traumatic stress disorder, you are potentially putting yourselves out there for a HIPAA violation. That's health information protection. You cannot disclose that to the general public or anything else like, like that right now. If that naughty list in any way, shape, or form, you are, I know me, if I, if that was me, my lawyers would be all over like flies. So essentially, on the drop-down menu, you can add to selection for do-not-knock, do-not-call. That means formal communication is sent electronically or in writing over the mail. So there's your protections, that's available absolutely in Salesforce systems.
Thank you. Next comment, or next speaker?
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Liza Morrison, and I live here in Palm Coast. I got to start with, I'm quite disgusted that I had to watch on Fox News, Palm Coast, Florida, for the naughty list. And I don't know how, Mr. Morton, you're sitting there, other than you turning your resignation, and you're stating, we should frame it.
Ma'am, you need to address your comments to the, to the acting mayor, please, under our council rules and procedures. Please, thank you.
Anybody that has ever worked for a sheriff's department, a police department, or the federal government, we all knew who the problem citizens were. We did not print out a list, we did not have a list, we always took precautions before proceeding to the home. We did not have a list. We always took precautions before proceeding to the home. You cannot tell me that any of these city employees are not given a handbook on safety procedures when there are safety procedures given out to the people that work at Circle K. I don't understand. If you're telling me our city employees are not trained and educated to call the sheriff's department when you have somebody throwing a spear at them, when you have somebody throwing things at them, threatening to shoot them or kill them, then we need to spend money this year on retraining our city employees on safety for we can ensure their safety. Because I can tell you, the sheriff's department does not have a list. They know. They all speak. Up in the federal government, we didn't have a list. We knew. We all spoke. This is disgusting that we were on Fox News this week. And as a city resident, that I am terrified we're going to get sued because it's already talked about. Y'all need to pay attention to the news. People have already spoken to lawyers in Miami. That's going to cost me money. I'm a business owner here in Palm Coast. I have three businesses. I don't want to pay the taxes because there is mistakes made on this city council and in this city by people that have made the wrong decisions. My last thing I need to address, Mr. Morton should be stepping down. He should not be staying out his 30 days because there's too much back and forth. That's, it's taking us away from what's at hand. And what's at hand is, we have, what, seven people running for mayor? That should be our focus right now. For the people, this city can decide who's going to best represent us sitting in that chair, not all the back and forth over Mr. Morton. There's more important things for these residents. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. When my kids were little, they always used to say to me, Daddy, how did you get so smart? I said, because I asked a lot of stupid questions. Well, this might be the stupidest question I'm going to ask. I've been coming to these meetings for a long time. I have no idea what you folks are talking about, this list. And I'm probably sure that there's a whole lot of other people behind me or sitting at home that don't know what this list is. So, could somebody explain to me, who, like, who's in charge of this list? Is there a list for every department in the city? Is it like a good old boys' club? So, somebody has to explain to the residents what this list is and how you get on it and how you get off. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Okay, so now I can bring back to this council. We have another speaker?
No, we're good. Is he coming or not?
Dan Priati, Palm Coast. I would like to approach the council with this email to prove that Agapool's license has never been suspended from Flagler County.
I don't think you could hear. It would be, it would be to the city clerk, or maybe she could come down and receive it from you, sir. That was the proper procedure. She'll come down and get it for you. I think you've got some help coming.
Like the lady who spoke before me, litigation can come from this, which will cost the taxpayers a lot of money. While I do know none of the council or manager had anything to do with this.
We get a mic for, I don't think Brinkinow could hear.
While I do know none of the council and manager had anything to do with this or knew nothing about it, I want on record that Mr. Reichman has been our city attorney for a long time. There's no way he can say he knew nothing about this, especially when it's in an email back when I was going through a bunch of things with this. That's something we need to take a look at as well. Where I'm going with this, I'm not sure, but I do know I don't want my city and taxpaying citizens to front the bill for this. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd like to submit that, you can. Thank you. Next speaker? Okay, closing public comment on the motion that was on the floor. So, we have a motion, a second, we have public comment. Bring it back to this council for a vote. Okay? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those against? I see none. The motion passes four to zero. Coming back, the next item that I think we are going to discuss as a council would be how we move forward with our city manager, the city manager search. I would like to discuss with the council what I have understood, and if you have additional details, we can talk about it. First, if we do go with the route of appointing a city manager tonight, then, well, let me first start by saying, if Matt, excuse me, if Mr. Morton vacates the 30 days and we relinquish him of that responsibility, we have to appoint an interim city manager tonight, or we won't have anybody to sign the checks, essentially. So, there will be no one here who's actually in charge. So, if we vacate the responsibility for the last 30 days of Mr. Morton's contract to be served out, we would be required tonight to appoint someone as interim city manager. Yep. Thank you. I'm just discussing, we don't have the opportunity to talk to one another outside of city council. This is the first time that this governing body has been able to talk to one another about this issue. So, I want to make sure they're on the same page as me before we make our decision. So, I'm telling them what I know and what I've been told by city staff so that we can get it on the table. So, like I was saying, that's the option. That I understand it. The other option we have is, well, let's see, other one is we could fire Mr. Morton. That's also an option. Number three is that we can, thank you. Number three would be that we have the ability to just have him serve his 30 days out, and at the end of that, we would move forward. Those are the options that I've been made aware of and that I've asked questions about. If there are additional sequences of events that you would like to discuss, I would love to hear what's-
Yeah, there's something I want to discuss, and it's no reflection on our present staff at all. But, you know, if you're going to fly an airplane, you really need to be a pilot. And I would hate to see us put somebody in a position who's never done the city manager job where they could possibly fail. And the two appointees that Mr. Morton made just recently are new to being directors, so, you know, it takes a lot to learn how to do his job. Mr. Reichman had come up with a suggestion that he mentioned to me earlier today, and it sounded pretty good to me. And I would like, Bill, if you could address that.
Well, just following up on the comments that I've heard this evening, the first thing that's most important for this council to do this evening, if you are considering to take action this evening on the resignation notice that was provided to you by your city manager. And consistent with his contract with this city, he was required to give notice to the city council, 30 days notice, and he has done that. I believe it would be formally today, so it would be, the 30 days would end on, let's see, July 1st, 2020. So, that's the starting point, is that you have a current city manager that-
Twenty twenty-one, right?
Excuse me, 2021.
Okay.
I misspoke. I apologize. So, you have a city manager who will continue to, otherwise, you know, if all we're looking at is the letter, the written notice of resignation, you have a city manager that will continue as your city manager until his resignation becomes effective, which would be the end of June, early July. The charter requires you to appoint a city manager in the event of a vacancy.
Interim city manager.
Interim city manager, or interim city manager, and that's one of your options. Obviously, everyone knows that there's an election coming up, and right now, we have four, not five, members, elected officials. So, you know, you have various options, but the most important thing is that if you're going to take any action to eliminate Mr. Morton as the city manager, you've got to have someone as an interim and acting city manager, already onboard, contractually obligated. Otherwise, you do not have, you don't have anyone to fulfill the charter responsibilities of the position of city manager. So, to your point, Councilmember Danko, a couple of options you can look inside from existing employees. And, you know, I'm not the person to identify such individuals or to recommend some individuals. The other option for this interim position is to try to find someone that is not a current employee, not currently employed by staff. And to your point, I just wanted the council to understand that I received a communication today from a former city manager who indicated he would be willing to come in as, only as an interim city manager, if this council was interested in working with someone like that. His name is Ron McLamore. He's the former city manager for Winter Springs, Daytona Beach, and the city of, I believe, DeBarry. He is retired, and I do not want to get in the business of telling you what to do. I mean, it's clearly your decision, but that was brought to my attention, and so I wanted to, you asked me to pass that on.
I did ask you to pass that on, and I think that we have Mr. Morton for 30 days. We don't have to make a decision tonight. I would certainly like to see, to learn more about the person Bill was in contact with today, because I think bringing in someone who can hit the ground running, who has that experience, three different cities, who doesn't want to stay, is willing to do it, an interim, may be a good solution.
You're absolutely right. And I also think by the time this special election has occurred, we have the opportunity now to be collecting and curating resumes. So, we have the opportunity now to not move too quickly. We have a fantastic city staff, and I mean that. We have a tremendous quality of individual that leads all of our individual departments. Everyone who was with the Citizens Academy tonight witnessed that firsthand. I think, speaking from experience on the council, when we had a vacancy with Mr. Landon, the fire chief stepped up. And you want someone who's going to fill this role in the interim, who is someone who's steadfast in the community and understands our organization at the city level. I think if we were to come to an understanding as a council that we wanted to move forward, waiving Mr. Morton's last 30 days because we think that's the best way for the city to move forward, I think that is a question that we need to answer amongst ourselves. And then moving forward past that, I think the solution, if we were to agree on that, would be to appoint an interim city manager and an assistant city manager from within while we curate and collect the resumes, so that we can make a decision once a special election occurs for that individual who's going to unite and move our city forward. So, I suppose the question that I have-
Let me be clear. This evening, as you indicated earlier, Councilmember Clufus, this is the first time that the four of you have had the legal ability to have this conversation. So, it's kind of an awkward, uncomfortable conversation, but this is our first time to be able to have it. I think your threshold decision is, since we all recognize that you need to move forward with nominating and seconding the request for someone to be your acting city manager, interim city manager, I think your threshold question is, is that going to be someone from inside the organization, or is it going to be someone that's outside the organization? Because I've heard a motion that was withdrawn tonight for someone within the organization, and I've heard a comment from the gentleman sitting to your right, sir, who's looking in a different direction. And we've got four, this is what I want to say from a legal standpoint, you've got four folks here, and to appoint an interim city manager, the charter requires three affirmative votes.
So, I'm curious, Councilman, are you talking about an inside appointment or an outside appointment?
For the interim, until we collect enough, because I'm very interested in this individual who I just learned for the first time. I think there's probably many qualified candidates out there, potentially, that would be willing to fill that role. I think if we decided as a governing body, and I would really, this is a tough introspective question, whether or not the city is in a better position to move forward with Mr. Morton coming to work for the next 30 days or not. And that's what we have to answer amongst ourselves, because if he is, then we keep him the 30 days, and he continues to do his job and the transfer of knowledge.
And we gather up more information about the person that our attorney has recommended, suggested.
Correct, or the-
I want to make clear for the record, I'm not recommending anybody. There is not a motion on the floor. We're actually under council comments right now, if anyone may have remembered or forgotten. But this is obviously a very important discussion that needs to occur this evening. So, you know, I mean, at any point in time, if any of you would like to make a motion to more direct this discussion.
My question just first is, do you think that there is a positive outcome of having Mr. Morton remain in his current role coming on the day-to-day, or is there a split about that? Do we think that-
I think the city's ready to move on.
Councilman Danko?
I think if it results in us finding someone who's done this job several times and is capable to get us through this period of time until we find a new city manager, I'm willing to wait a little bit so we can learn a little more about this gentleman and make that decision at the next business meeting.
One thing, as a multiple business owner, I always like to hire within the business. I believe here, we have the great people. They already know our day-to-day operation, and it's an easy, smooth transition. So, to bring someone else in for a short time, it's going to complicate things more for the staff.
You're absolutely right. I believe, and I will approach it from a different perspective before I ask Mayor Brinkinow his opinion. I think it's healthiest, honestly, if we're going to look at this from a holistic perspective, it's healthiest for Matt to separate himself from the city for Matt's sake, for Mr. Morton's sake, because the next 30 days, we know that it would just be an unsurroundable attack on every odd and end, and we know that. And I don't think it's fair to ask someone to sit around as a lame duck who potentially, anything that he's involved with will be tainted. And I mean that in the most respectful way. It's just the public opinion on how things have moved. And I think it's healthiest and the best decision, you know, for us individually and as the city, but also Matt as a whole, so that he doesn't have to put on, isn't put under this relentless attack during the election. We just know how that is going to go. Councilman Brinkinow? Or, I'm sorry, Mayor Brinkinow?
Well, first of all, I don't even know if Denise Bevan wants it. Is she willing to? Is she obligated to? I don't know. I need to speak with her. I need time to speak with her. Okay? It's unfair for me to say, okay, let's do it. Denise, you are entering city manager. And then she says, oh, no, I'm not. Then where am we at?
I think she's willing to come up and speak tonight. I spoke to her, and she'd said her exact comments were, anything that the city needs, they were more than welcome to help us with.
Would-
She spoke to you.
Would you mind if we asked Denise to come forward?
I think her and Chief Forte.
Yes, in my opinion, I would also like Chief Forte to come forward, being the steadfast, cornered steward.
I'd like some clarity to listen to your stuff.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
So, there's a structure in place right now, a command structure, that there's an order. Originally, it was the city manager, there was room for an assistant city manager, and after the assistant city manager would be the directors and so on. We discussed this a while back October, and my recommendation was for Denise to be the assistant city manager when we were actually looking for an ACM. I have a very long history with Denise. We both started working in Light Team, which was leadership and excellence. We came up the ranks together. She has been part of the Strategic Action Plan, which you all should be familiar with. Denise has had a long history in working with every council since 2011 on the Strategic Action Plan. There is nobody in this city that is more intimate with that program than Denise Bevan. When you start looking at the chain of command and you see who's going to be the next in line, you want somebody that's got a history, an understanding, a good ability to interact between both the directors and the city council that can both bridge the gap that's coming between both of us. When you consider Denise, she brings a lot of ability to work with everybody into the organization, and I think what we need now is some calm, some stability, the ability to take what we've got and move forward. She can be a huge asset when we start the discussions with the budget that's about to happen, and she's going to work with Helena and the directors to make sure that the information that's presented to you is from the directors and in a format that she can correlate that to the Strategic Action Plan. One word of caution, though, there's a Strategic Action Plan that is historically now under the former mayor, and it needs to be considered today before you go down the road of a new budget. That is where Denise is going to be her most beneficial, because she can tell you where the history is and where this organization needs to move to. So, if you're asking if Denise is qualified, she is very qualified. Although she has not filled in the role as a city manager or an assistant city manager, she is qualified to do so. I have worked with her enough that when she was doing strategic action planning correspondingly, I was also doing performance measurement, and both of our teams worked seamlessly together to the performance measures that you see today. So, when you start considering, is Denise Bevan qualified? She is, and she is a gap bridger. She can help you get to where you need to be to get this budget ready for October 1st. So, I hope that helps you, Mr. Brinkinow.
Actually, you did very much. The only thing I want, before I have the honor and the pleasure of making a motion for her to be actually entering the city manager, is to hear from her mouth, yes, I'm willing to. That's the only thing.
Chief Forte, one other question I have. Would you be willing, would you be willing to be the number two to Denise Bevan's?
Absolutely. Whatever she needs, she's got our support.
And I think that is, okay, I'm responsible. If we could ask Denise to-
Denise, I want to hear from you.
Come on up, Denise.
Good evening, city council. Thank you, Chief Forte, for those kind words. Thank you for hearing the level of confidence that you have in your staff tonight, and I'm here to- I'm here to serve the city of Palm Coast in any capacity necessary. I would ask to better understand the terms and to work with each council member and our amazing team on what that looks like. With that, thank you and yes.
Oh, now I'm happy. And as soon as I can make that motion, I will, sir.
Well, let me interject one thing. This is not, it's never happened like this before, but this is, this is, this is the first, this is not the first time that we've had to have someone step in and fill a role quickly for city manager. We have had a former city manager whose position was terminated, and at that point in time, there was an assistant city manager, and that assistant city manager was selected by that council at that time to be the acting city manager for a decent period of time. But I also want to make sure, and I am not the attorney for Ms. Bevan, I am the attorney for the city council, but at that point in time, there was an agreement that was memorialized between the city council and Mr. Falgo to recognize, you know, what the pay would be, what the difference would be, and also to protect Mr. Falgo's position in the event that he did not ultimately become the city manager. Because at that point, with that situation, that was an option. And so there was a, there was an agreement that was reached. Again, I'm not the attorney for Ms. Bevan, but that is something that we did last time which served well both the council and Mr. Falgo, because he was not selected as city manager at the end of his term as interim city manager.
So basically, do we have to discuss our, you know, pay right now?
I would off, I would offer, a solution to this would potentially be for the interim to prorate Mr. Morton's salary for the next 45 days as Denise Bevan's salary, just for this interim while we get this done and thank her for stepping up.
With the understanding if she's not selected permanently, she gets to return to her previous position.
At her current-
Doesn't risk losing her job.
Correct, yes. She would have to vacate hers, yes, you're absolutely right. So I would make the motion that the city, I should actually ask our council members first, would anyone else like to make some, a comment?
I have to make that motion.
Oh, yeah, you're right, yeah, I have the virtual gavel, you're right.
Can I put my motion back?
Yeah, you could, right, yeah. So I suppose this would be, we're looking for a motion that would promote Denise Bevan's to interim city manager at the prorated pay of Matthew Morton. We would relieve Mr. Morton of his services 30 days early, and he would still receive the entirety of those 30 days' pay.
And does that include the chief taking the number two spot?
And that would include Chief Forte taking the number two spot to be the right-hand chief to Denise Bevan's.
Two very qualified people.
Yep, absolutely, and-
I'd like to, I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, I didn't actually create the motion.
I'd like to make that motion.
That you can do, yes.
We got a second?
I'll second it, or Councilmember Brinkino can second it, either way.
Before we open it to the public, let's be very clear, I want to make, because this is important for a lot of folks, I want to be very clear, and that is, the motion is to appoint Denise Bevan as the acting or interim city manager. There was, she has not necessarily accepted your proposal with regard to the agreement. That will still need to be memorialized and come back to this council, because it'll be a contract, and that can come back. My suggestion would be, is that it could come back next week after the workshop or before the workshop as a special meeting. We have done that in the past, so that we don't have any further delay, that would be my recommendation. We could wait until the next business meeting, but that doesn't help with the second part of where I think we are going. Mr. Morton?
Sorry to interrupt, and if it's done and councils made their decision, why don't they just authorize me to sign the agreement when Denise has accepted the terms and you've reviewed it-
Do that too.
And it's done, instead of coming back to get another meeting and the city can move on?
Absolutely. If this, if this council, okay, so the motion would be to memorialize the agreement between this council and Ms. Bevan, to be negotiated with the city attorney, the city manager, and then to be executed by Ms. Bevan if she approves, and by the city manager with your authority.
And Chief Forte would be number two in command.
I'll decline any increase in page of Denise Bevan in the process. But one thing that I would like to do is formally request each one of the council members to give Renina full of the authority to start the process of looking for a full-time city manager. The process is very long, expected to be four to five months. Certainly, the city manager position will not be filled before the new mayor is elected. So we have a lot of process that needs to get done, and we could do it ahead of time before the mayor gets elected. And then, once the mayor is selected, they can make the final selection on who is actually going to be the city manager.
I think we should have a mayor to decide what that process is going to be, to help us decide that process.
Well, let's, we have a motion on the floor.
Yep.
Let's chew on that and get that done, and then we can come back to the proposal that the fire chief-
I accept the motion.
So it's been made, it's been seconded, now it goes to the public.
Yep. If anyone would like to make public comment on this motion that we have currently on the floor, they are welcome to do so. They can approach the podium, state their name for the record, and they have three minutes once they do so. Don't be intimidated of the chief.
For the record, Jason Gerallo, Citizens of Palm Coast, former city employee. I would humbly ask you to terminate Matt Morton effective immediately. Matt Morton has cost me and many others their careers, has built a culture of fear and cronyism-
Jason, excuse me, but what we're asking for citizen comments on-
And I'm making them to the part about ending his contract immediately.
Okay, we're not, that was not part of the motion. The motion right now is just-
Barbosa brought it up.
And we're not there yet, that's, so we're only on appointing Ms. Bevan.
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. I've known Chief Forte a long time, and I'm not one of his firefighters, but if I was, I'd go in right behind him on any burning building. And if he's, has this much confidence and support in this young lady, then I think all of you, it'd be a fool not to support him in this decision, because he's the best we got.
Next speaker?
Good evening, Jill Woolbright, Palm Coast resident since 1989 and proud to be a part of this wonderful city. I like the decorum that I'm seeing tonight and how you're uniting as a team. I think that everybody needs a fresh start, and I believe that the city is looking to you to see how you're handling yourselves tonight. I believe that this is a good time for you to unite, to come together and unite together. I believe the recommendation of your city staff is that you have someone willing and able to take the position. She's never held the position before, so I'm thinking base pay of whatever the salary schedule is for the position would be a good starting point for her. A set time of interim to give yourself a deadline, maybe five to six months, give yourself a deadline to do a thorough search, and in the end, she may be your city manager or she may not, and she knows that going in. They make everything very clear and open and transparent to all players, and in the end, stand together. I'd like to hear, see tonight, as the citizens would, for the healing of this community, a four-zero vote in favor of whatever you decide to do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker? I see no one approach the podium, I will close public comment, bring it back to the council.
So we got a motion already?
Any further discussion?
Just clarify the motion one last time, please.
The motion is to appoint Denise Bevan as your interim city manager, subject to the completion of an agreement between the city, between the city and Ms. Bevan, to be negotiated, and then with the authority of this council to be executed by your current city manager.
Okay.
Motion and a second, we've received public input.
Yep, and I see no comments from our council. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes.
Four, four zero.
Four to zero.
Congratulations, Denise.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, Paula. Make us proud, we need to make this proud.
Your fire chief did bring up an issue, and that can be discussed and considered separately by this council. If you would repeat that, sir, please. Thank you, Mr. Eichmann. It does not need to be acted upon today, but if we start the process to look for the full-time city manager, there's a lot of documentation that needs to be, we have to go out to a research firm, and I'm sure Renina can fill you in on what needs to get done, but there is a lot of legwork that gets done, and most of it is two to three months ahead of time before it even hits the streets. So if you want to get a replacement city manager, time is of the essence. You've got to bring somebody in and start the process of bringing in a firm, or we go to the outside ourselves, so look. But Renina might be able to speak on that herself, but it's time-consuming, and at least three months, and you've got a lot of room to get things done early.
Yep. Thank you, chief. I can say from experience, when we replaced Mr. Landon, that it did take quite a while, and there is a lot of legwork that goes into it, whether we're going to go the RFP route and try to go with a firm to aggregate these resumes for us, or we do it ourselves. I think Renina getting a start on that process and at least bringing us back the options for us to consider would be-
Does this leave us the option of doing both?
I think, I think what we're authorizing tonight would be Renina starts the process of figuring out which firms that we can try to pursue.
There's also the option of any council member bringing in an outside person that they might suggest, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I don't want to lose track of that, just in case.
I would like to wait until we have a new mayor.
Okay, but the process itself, we wouldn't actually be picking anybody?
I'd like to see also what Denise, how she would do.
Okay. Counsel?
She could apply, she could always apply for the position herself to be chairman.
And that's historically how it was handled?
Can I make a suggestion that we just table this to the next business meeting to give us a little breathing room?
And how about if we could amend it to be an item in our workshop, so that just over this next week?
Excellent, excellent, I'm good.
Excellent, so I can't make that motion, but-
I make a motion to make it to their next workshop.
It should be next Tuesday.
Okay, I have to open that up for public comment, if-
It's procedural, there's nothing substantive.
Oh, perfect, okay, I do not. I will bring it back to this council. All those in favor of amending our workshop agenda to have this additional item on it, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? None? Motion passes four to zero.
All right, I believe the last, the last item that was discussed is that, assuming that you will have an acting city manager upon the execution of the agreement between the city and your candidate that you've selected this evening, that her, her role as acting city manager would start upon the vacation of the position by Mr. Morton.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, which was my first motion, that we do the 30-day payout and waive a physical presence of a city hall.
All right, the motion has been presented, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Let's be, be clear.
But she has to-
Yeah, it's not going to, it will not happen unless and until, unless and until Ms. Bevan has, has agreed to the terms of her new position as interim city manager pursuant to the agreement that she will have the opportunity to review. Now, with that said, I want to make sure we're clear, she will not be the interim city manager until there's a vacancy. Okay? There isn't a vacancy until-
That's what the motion is for, right?
Yes, yes, I understand that, I'm just trying to make sure we're clear. The motion has been made and has been seconded, but specifically what you're, what you're directing is to waive the 30-day notice that is otherwise required in the contract that the prior council, Mr. Morton, entered into, so that, so that upon the completion of this agreement with Ms. Bevan, he would then at that point be relieved of his duties as city manager, and that he would receive the compensation that he would otherwise have received at the end of the 30 days.
Yep, got it, I'm good with that.
So we have a motion on the floor, is there a second? I know you said you're good with this.
I made the second, yeah.
Okay, excellent, so bring it back to our council, is this procedural, or do we have-
No, this is not procedural.
Yep, so let's open it up to the public, whoever would like to make public comment on this agenda item, please do so now.
Once again, for the record, Jason Gerallo, citizen and former employee of the city of Palm Coast. I would humbly ask you once again to terminate Matt Morton effective immediately. I know you're talking about severing his contract, but I don't think that goes far enough. I think that you need to leave a blemish on his record. Matt has cost me and others their careers, and I see no injustice whatsoever in allowing him to simply walk away and ride off into the sunset. This council to continue to allow him simply to disappear without any record note on his record when he applies for another career is unconscionable and should be reconsidered. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, my name's Michael West, I live in the B section. I just want to caution, from the way I'm understanding, if you decide to not accept Mr. Morton's employment for the next 30 days, then that means until the interim city manager is officially under contract, the city is without leadership? I think that's very irresponsible of the council to consider terminating Mr. Morton before we have an agreement with an interim senate city manager.
Thank you.
If, if I may, just to respond to that, that's an excellent point, but I want to make sure that this council is clear, as I understood the motion, and that is, is that Mr. Morton would continue to act in his current capacity as city manager until, not, not until there was an agreement reached with the interim. So there would never be, the city would never have, not have a city, an acting city manager. Just want to make sure it's clear for the record, sir, but your point is well taken.
Thank you. Next speaker?
If I can jump in for the record, unless there's procedural problem or Denise needs more time, I expect to have it done before the end of the week.
He said without any procedural issues that he wouldn't foresee this extending past the end of the week. And I think that's a reflection on the excellent executive team that we've accrued and the people who are put in the positions of power to be able to make the decisions that are best for our city departments.
Anybody else?
And, yes, next speaker? Anyone else, public comment? I don't see anyone, I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to this council. Any additional comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. Motion passes five, four to zero. Okay, I've-
We're still on council comments.
Yeah, yeah, it's just getting, yeah, now the fun starts. My comments would be that I'm thankful for the demeanor and decor that we were able to handle ourselves with tonight. I know that the city was looking to us for leadership and to see how we responded to the moment. You can either allow a moment to define you or define the moment, and I think tonight we did a great job as a governing body defining the moment and putting a plan in place that's prudent for the city to be able to move forward successfully, and it doesn't take any drastic actions tonight, but it puts us in a position to be able to reflect as a governing body on the best way for us to move forward and get the best individual who we think, including our next mayor, is going to be moving our city forward. And that's who we report to, or they report to us, they're the only person that our governing body has action against. So I'm thankful for the way that we handle ourselves and also the audience tonight. Thank you for understanding this is a difficult conversation for us to have, and thank you for sticking it out and hearing all of our different representations of what's going on, so thank you.
I just have one, one more comment. We did, actually, I, I got a recommendation to read a comment from another elected official regarding the elections and the cost of searching for a new city manager. The number thrown up there was $265,000. Well, I don't know how much the election would cost, but the last time we looked for one city manager, excuse me, the total was $28,000 that we had to pay, plus $1,000 that we spent on food that one day that we had people visiting and talking. So I really don't know where this $260,000, $265,000 came from, but I don't know exactly how much the election is going to cost. The only thing is that the last time we looked for a city manager, it only cost it, and I'm saying only compared to the number given, $28,000 plus $1,000 in food. Thank you, that was my comment.
Thank you. I would also like to give the opportunity to Councilmember Brinkino or Councilman Danko to make additional public comments for your closing statements, and I'd like to thank Councilmember Barbosa for allowing the withdrawal of his motion and allowing us to proceed the way we did.
Welcome. I'd like to thank all the public for coming out today, and as you can see, we, sometimes can we work all together. So I'd like to thank our councilmen, great job. So I'd like to thank our councilmen, great job.
Yeah, I agree with that, I have nothing to add, but I'm glad we all pulled this off tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, excellent. We'll move on to discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Nothing.
Excellent, and discussion by city manager of matters on the agenda.
Nothing, thank you.
Excellent, okay, we can entertain a motion—
Make the motion for attorney.
I second.
Wow.
Yes.